Tuesday, March 4th, 2025 at 7:00 PM to order. Uh, will the clerk please take the role?
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner Vanderlin.
Here.
Commissioner Dorian.
Here.
Commissioner Macees.
Here.
Chair Banischinsky.
Here.
And I have, uh, Commissioner LaSalle as absent. Is that correct? Excuse?
Yeah, please excuse Commissioner LaSalle.
And Commissioner Thompson, I don't see at this point online.
Okay, well, can you, uh, excuse Vice Chair Thompson?
Oh, Vice Chair.
For the moment, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have the land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge that the city of Kenmore is situated upon the ancestral lands of the Snohomish, Snoquami, Sockswattle, Duamish, Stilguamish, Tulalup, Suquamish, Makoshut, and other tribes who are part of the Coast Salish peoples. We recognize and express our deepest respect for their enduring stewardship and profound relationship with this land, which they have cherished and protected since time immemorial. We honor the First Peoples, acknowledge their vibrant cultures, and commit ourselves to learning from their wisdom in our journey to promote justice, equity, and mutual understanding. We pledge to stand alongside these communities in acknowledging past injustices and working towards a future that respects and celebrates the diverse heritage of this land.
Please join me in standing for the flag salute.
Take allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Public, for which it stands.
Next on our agenda is public comment. Clerk, is there anyone signed up for public comment?
We do not have any online public comment, but we have two in person.
Okay, uh, we welcome our community members to the planning commission meeting. In this forum, the commission does not engage or dialogue with the public. The primary role is to listen. We will hear from our onsite guests first and, uh, followed, I guess we don't have any pre-registered virtual guests, so we'll just hear from our onsite guests tonight. All guests must address comments to the commission. The clerk will acknowledge your request and call your name when it is your turn. Your time will start when we confirm that we can hear you. Please state your name and city of residence for the record and keep your comments to three minutes. We will not split your time with others or reset your time except by express approval of the chair. You can submit materials to the clerk in advance. This meeting is being recorded. Thank you so much for showing up, uh, participating and taking the time to share your thoughts.
Caitlin Sullivan.
Uh, my name is Caitlin Sullivan. I'm a Kenmore resident. During the pandemic, I renovated an old Seattle home, turning a two-bedroom, one-bathroom house into a four-bedroom, two-bath home with a two-bed basement ADU and a detached two-bedroom ADU or a DADU in the backyard. From the street, once the construction was complete, you can't tell the difference between the previous single-family home and the new configuration that provides housing for three separate households. My brother and my parents have both built basement ADUs in their classic Seattle homes. And just as with mine, you'd never know from the street. Instead of letting unused space go to waste, my parents have worked with local organizations to provide extremely low-cost housing to refugee families. My brother can make ends meet as an artist with the income from his basement apartment. They've done all of this while leaving the look of the home unchanged. As you discuss code changes today, I encourage you to separate ADUs from the middle housing types that are required by HB 1110. ADUs are the only infill housing type that is routinely used by existing homeowners and not exclusively for developers. ADUs add housing capacity without demolishing the existing homes or changing the look of a residential neighborhood. ADUs often provide housing for extended family, allowing longtime members of the community to age in place or adult children to continue to live in the community that they grew up in. What I found when I started looking at adding a detached ADU, a DADU, to my lot is in, is that the current Kenmore code deeply discourages adding new DADUs. To build a new DADU, I will need to connect new water and sewer lines to the street with NUD at a cost of nearly $25,000 in connection fees per unit. For my lot, I need 235 feet of new sewer line. I will also need a new power drop from PSC to pay a sewer capacity charge fee from King County to pay impact permit and architect fees. Before I put a shovel in the dirt for the building itself, I will have already spent over $100,000 per unit. When we add this to the cost of construction and financing, we won't talk about tariffs, I will have already, I will have to rent this new DADU for excessive $3,500 per month just to cover the cost, which the market will not support. Building here is not a cash cow. It's a donation to the community. Unless and until the roadblocks to building ADUs are removed, the code will continue to incentivize developers to build the biggest houses on the smallest lots and to sell them for the most money. If the goal of this commission is to preserve Kenmore as neighborhoods of single-family homes available only to those making upwards of $200,000 per year, then leaving the code as is would be exactly the way to do this. If, however, the goal of the commission is to welcome and support members of the community from all income brackets, then some simple but essential changes have to be made. And I realize I'm running out of time, so I'm going to hand you papers with those four, um, changes. And then I have one for the clerk, if that's okay.
You can hand everything to the clerk and the clerk will distribute them to us. Thank you so much.
Next up, Dakota Rash.
Good evening, Plank Commission. My name is Dakota Rash. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm a resident of Lake Forest Park and I have family here in Kenmore. Um, I'm here tonight to, I'm here tonight to speak on the missing middle changes. Um, just as broad comments to start off, I support missing middle housing. Dense, diverse housing is not only necessary in order to fight the overlapping, inter-accelerating crises of habitat loss, homelessness, and an ever-increasing wealth gap. It also helps us build communities where neighbors are seen as neighbors instead of nuances. It boosts our mental, emotional, and physical health by fighting the extractionist design standards of suburbs. And also helps us create cleaner, safer environments with more eyes on streets. This is not to be seen as a requirement. I think it is good and helpful for our communities. Moving on to more specifics, I'm not a fan of the words "generally" and "substantial" in 1821-035-H3. This is talking about affordable units. I think affordable units should have the same functionality as other units. Having qualifiers in there feels risky for an important noun like "functionality." For the public benefits and development incentives, um, 1821-035-I2, specifically the next page, I'm not a huge fan of the incentives not applying to redevelopment or remodeling of existing new principal single-family homes. If the idea of missing middle is to put some density, some much-needed density, into communities that are already built to be not dense, I don't think we should be disincentivizing redevelopment or, uh, changing what's already there. I think that's exactly in line with the goals of missing middle. Um, parking, my favorite. Y'all have all probably already heard me comment on parking and the myriad reasons why I don't like it. Um, I really just think it's a disadvantage to truly healthy and vibrant communities in so many ways. It's always going to be with us and we should always have some parking for people that need to rely on cars. But we need to reduce it nearly everywhere in these proposals. I'd propose at max one per dwelling unit in, uh, many duplexes, triplexes, and so on. I'd really like to see, uh, less, and I'll also draw on an inconsistency here where I think that for large ADUs, we're contemplating having no parking requirements, whereas for other buildings or other developments of similar size, we are still requiring parking at a higher rate. So I'd want to make sure there's inter-consistency. Finally, on the topic of these public development incentives, I think they're a good idea. I think we should be incentivizing this sort of thing to make sure that we're not just saying we approve of it and actually making code that lets it happen. But I don't want these development incentives to actually be costly trade-offs. I think the best example of that comes from the, um, idea of reducing height. If you build something below a height, then you get reduced setbacks, just reduced setbacks. If you really want to make these things incentives, make them incentives. Don't make them overly burdensome trade-offs. So I'd want to make sure that you're really looking at that in your code to make sure, are we really making sure that we are incentivizing this happening and bringing the benefits that come, the studied, proven benefits that come with development of this type into our community? Thank you.
Chair Dwight Thompson, uh, Vice Chair Thompson has joined the webinar.
Fantastic. Welcome, Vice Chair Thompson. Are there any other, um, public comment sign-ups?
That is it.
All right. Thank you to the two community members who showed up tonight to share your thoughts. Participating in this way is really important. And thank you to the people who are in the audience listening as well, here and at home. Great. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve, um, the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as it stands.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Yes. Oh, sorry. Do you have your hand raised? Yes, Chair, Vice Chair Thompson.
Hi, uh, we, I'd like to amend the consent agenda to include the, uh, excusal of, um, Dave, uh, Com- Commissioner Dorian from last week's, um, me- main last commission meeting.
All right, thank you. A second on that?
A second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Next on our agenda is continued review of draft middle housing regulations. So I'll turn it over to Todd and Debbie for a presentation.
So I think the ultimate goal tonight is to go through the code and see if the comments that were addressed from your last meeting reflect your direction. So we heard your general direction about how to implement middle housing, where they should be implemented, and that they should be comparable to regulations for single-family homes. That was kind of the overall broad direction. So those changes were reflected by Kim Lee Horn in an updated memo. And so we can go through those changes, um, which, um, are highlighted in your packet and we're going to share those on the screen so Todd can walk through those changes, if that's okay, um, Chair.
Yes.
Oh, good evening, um, Todd Hall, Principal Planner. Um, so as Debbie mentioned, we're going to review the changes that were, uh, made since your last, uh, meeting on February 18th. Um, in your packet, there's a memo from our consultant, Kim Lee Horn, that outlines those changes along with a, um, table, uh, of neighborhood benefits and development incentives. So first, I wanted to just go over the, the bulleted items on the, on the first page of the memo. And the, the first one I have up here on the screen, if you recall, this is the, uh, map that was included in, um, KMC, uh, 1821-035. And it's referring to the, uh, applicable middle, middle housing development areas that, um, uh, that are R1 and R4. And there was some, uh, parcels that were omitted along the, uh, Sumamish River corridor. Uh, I believe Com- Commissioner, um, Vice Chair Thompson mentioned that or some others. And we just wanted to note that this map has now included all of those parcels, um, that are in red, um, or blue, um, that would not be affected because of the, they're either the R1 critical areas or R4 adjacent to these, um, streams and, and wetlands. So... So that's, that's all really on that, that particular item. We just wanted to, to show that. Uh, moving on to the, the next bullets. Um, so now we get into the, the changes on, specifically on 1821-035. There was some additions, um, with regarding to, um, the clarification of requirements for additional units, uh, through providing affordable housing, including requirements on deed restrictions. And so those are all outlined in, in, uh, letter C through D, um, uh, in 1821-035. And that's shown up on the screen here. So, um, first is, uh, C, qualify for additional units under affordable housing provisions. Uh, applicants shall commit to renting or selling required number of units as affordable housing and meeting the standards, uh, through the following subsections. Um, and then dwelling units that, uh, qualify as affordable housing shall have costs, including utilities, other than, um, phone, that don't exceed 30% of the monthly income. In terms of the qualification, the rental housing would be 60%, and owner-occupied housing would be 80%. Um, and then, uh, E, a unit shall be maintained as affordable for a term of 50 years. We talked about, um, that at the last meeting, about that kind of the timeframe. Uh, F, uh, applicants shall record a covenant or deed restriction, uh, continuing the, the rental or ownership of units, uh, subject to the affordability requirements, uh, again, for a period of no less than 50 years. G, covenant or deed restriction shall address criteria and policies to maintain a public benefit of the property if it's converted to other than what the use is provided for, uh, permanent, uh, affordable housing. And then H outlines, uh, units dedicated as affordability, uh, affordable housing units. Um, uh, 1, 2, and 3 provide a range of sizes, uh, to other units in the development. The number of bedrooms and the affordable should be the same proportion, uh, and then generally be distributed throughout the development. That was a conversation that we had, um, quite a bit about on, on how to approach that. And then, um, I, public benefits and incentives. Um, we've, uh, talked about, um, you know, various op- uh, options to consider minimizing impervious surfaces, allowing a range of, of, of unit types, trying to retain trees and promoting green spaces. So these are all outlined in, in, uh, letter I there. And then this gets into the, um, next section, which is also outlined in the memo, um, on page 1 and then leading into page 2 of the memo. And this talks about the various, um, neighborhood benefits, development, potential development incentives and, uh, how it's applicable, um, uh, middle housing types. And those are outlined in those areas. So, um, those are the primary areas that were focused on in terms of the changes. Um, I, as I noted in the last, uh, email a couple days ago, in the first iteration, I recognized that I didn't have all the, the red lines, um, still on there. And so I sent out a new one, um, that then shows all the changes that have been made to date. So not only are the ones that are highlighted here on, uh, in yellow, but also the ones that we've, we've all, um, seen before. So, um, our, our, first, we wanted to let the commission discuss the items in yellow and, and first and foremost, because those are the changes that we talked about between the, the last meeting and today, and, and then we can kind of go on from there. So I'll, uh, hand it back to the chair to kind of lead that discussion.
Thank you so much, Todd and Debbie. Before we start, I want to check in with the clerk. No? Okay, we're fine. All right. So what we're going to do is we're going to go through our packet, um... Starting, we don't have page numbers on these, so I'm going to use the PDF pages. We will address the pages where there have been changes since our last meeting. And then after we are through with that discussion, we all open it up for, um, any other comments that commissioners have that are related to code. Um, today, we're going to focus on, on code. So I am looking for... The first page where there's a highlight. If somebody gets there before me, feel free to let me know where it is. I do a lot of scrolling.
That's also on the screen too, so...
It's on the screen. Okay. Do you know what PDF page that is, Todd?
116.
My apologies for not getting any page numbers on.
I think you're 116.
116. Oh, my gosh. Thank you. That saves me a lot of scrolling. Okay, 1...
Oh, you know what? There's more ahead.
There's, there's a couple minor changes, but I think the bulk of it starts at 116.
Yeah, I have 116 on my screen and the packet on the internet, on the webpage.
411108 is the first one that I've seen, but...
So this would be starting 1821-035. It talks about residential zones, R4 and R6 middle housing.
For some reason, my PDF page numbers are the same as yours, so I'm going to do a, a search for rental housing so I can get on the same page. Okay, I'm there now. So we'll open it up for discussion. Go ahead, Mike.
Not sure. I'm out of the...
Okay, does anybody have any comments on? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I have some comments on, uh, what's in front of our screen now. So to our, one of our, uh, speakers tonight, um, or, or commenters, um, I am wondering if the commission has any thoughts on the words "general" and "substantial", and if we could just strike those, or if anybody has additional thoughts before I propose a motion. And, sorry, to be more clear, um... Oh, gosh, now I can't find the line for it. Yeah, there it is.
It's H, uh...
Three.
Three, yep.
Yeah, so, so just instead of generally be distributed throughout the development and have substantially the same functionality as other units in the development, change that to, um, units will be distributed throughout the development and have substantially the same functionality, uh, or sorry, and will have the same functionality as the other units in the development.
Commissioner Macees.
I mean, I, I think when we're talking about substantially the same functionality, we're not talking about interior finishes. This could be, does it have a deck? Does this one, does the lower-income unit not have a deck instead? Those, I mean, that's hard to define. I think that also pushes into what builders are building. I think that, I think we might have a hard time defining that with telling builders you must have the same units at the same cost. There, these are substantially functionally the same, so we all have a bedroom, we all have a bathroom. But are there extra pieces that might incentivize other people to pay more for the other units so they can get this unit more affordable?
Commissioner Olson.
No, thank you for the comment. Um... I'm considering how, how to process that. Yeah, I may want to take a moment to think about that one some more, but...
Okay, we can come around back to it at the end if we need to. Um... I actually do have a related comment. Commissioner Macees, did you have something else? No, okay. I do have a related comment, um, which is about the exterior finish. Mike Stanger mentioned from, from Arch did mention in his presentation that affordable units in other communities are required to have the same quality of outward-facing building materials. And I wondered if that is something that is important to us in our community, if that's something that we need to explicitly mention here, or if that's covered by substantially the same functionality as other units. Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, I suppose that's kind of where I'm, I'm going with this is if we start allowing code that sets up a differentiation in between these units, I'm a little worried about the type of, uh, implications that sets up in communities, right? Where you can point to, oh, well, that's the low-income house and that type of thing. Which I don't love. On the other hand, I am sympathetic to the argument of providing more housing. And I am sympathetic to additional costs from, say, a deck, which is not necessary, uh, to have a good house. I think things like exterior finishes are a great example of the type of thing I wouldn't necessarily want to budge on. And I also have some concerns around interior finishes and qualities. Um, for instance, and another thing I have a concern on is things like heat pumps. Do we provide heat pumps to the high-income homes? And then the low-income folks, we give them AC. They both can cool their houses. But one is a lot cheaper to operate and that cost is going to be placed upon lower-income folks, potentially. Um, so that type of thing. So I'm, I'm not sure if removing substantially is the right approach to Commissioner Macees's point. But I do think it would be nice to, or a good idea to try and perhaps pin this down a little bit more so that we don't have some of those issues.
Commissioner Vanderlin?
Hopefully a helpful alternative way to think about this. I, I am sensitive to the fact that, particularly when you're talking about missing middle, you're talking about relatively small developments. And so in order to fit something in a space, you're going to want to make a developer that's going to build, is going to need to have some flexibility. How do you do that? So I think the example of with or without a balcony or a deck is, is a good example. Uh, I could understand how you would have some units that would, some that wouldn't. Don't want to have a differentiation here in terms of what the affordable is. Uh, so I think how do you compensate for that difference when it does exist? And then I wonder if the, like, an equivalent rent, uh, might be a way to go about if, uh, it has substantially different qualities to it. It shouldn't have substantially different, but if it had something like it doesn't have a deck, then you would expect normally in, uh, market conditions for the rent to be lower. And that base rent ought to be reflected, uh, as the base from which the discount is taken. So the occupant can get the benefit of a substantially the same quality unit, but also get the benefit of a lower rent if the unit had some differences like, for instance, didn't have a, a balcony, that it would have a lower rent for, which actually might help affordability.
Looks like Debbie might be able to help us out here.
Maybe. Um, so in the municipal code in chapter 187, Affordable Housing, um, there is a section, uh, General Provisions. So this is for affordable housing that's provided in, you know, general areas. So we could probably take a look at that section of code to see if it's applicable. Um, and as an example, uh, under General Provisions, um, Design, it says the exterior design of the affordable housing unit shall be compatible and comparable with the rest of the dwelling units in the development and shall comply with any applicable design standards. The interior finishing quality of construction of the affordable housing units shall at a minimum be comparable to entry-level rental or initiative housing in the city. So, um... We could take, uh, we could either take a look at this section or we could refer to this section so that there's consistency with, um, what is generally the general provisions for affordable housing in the municipal, municipal code.
Commissioner Vanderlin and then Commissioner Olson.
I think that's a good description, and I think being consistent is important too. So I would, I like that suggestion. I think our missing middle standard is the same.
Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, I would agree. I, I like that description. Um, that being said, could you potentially read it one more time? The only thing I want to make sure is that finishes or furnishings like heating and cooling, for instance, are the same.
It, it doesn't mention heating or cooling specifically because this is talking about design specifically.
Okay.
Um, it, that section also talks about, um, size, tenure, location, and the, because this section also talks about location. It says, "Location, location of the affordable housing unit shall be proved by the city with the intent that they generally be intermingled with all other dwelling units in the development." So again, we have provisions, so maybe what we can do is take a look at what is currently adopted in the code and look at this section and either refer to this section of the code or add the same language. Because otherwise, we're going to end up with two different kinds of code which are essentially regulating affordable housing.
I'm seeing, oh, Vice Chair Thompson has his hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the, um, quoted, um, section that we already have written in the code is satisfactory for most of what we're looking at right now. And I believe, based on what we've done in the past, a reference to that section would be su- a specific reference to that section would be, uh, sufficient for that purpose. I am concerned, uh, that of the... that purpose. I am concerned that, similarly, that Commissioner Olson has, and particularly that there is a major push throughout the state, the county, and other items that we have, we, well, the council has, and this commission has, supported in being up-to-date with our use of energy, and heat pumps and the like. We're supposed to be looking at more 100% electricity rather than natural gas, et cetera, et cetera. So maybe we may need to look at, and either find the spot where that is addressed, or add a clause related to that. Thank you.
Okay, I was seeing nods previously about cross-checking the design standards and referencing them as appropriate. And then also, I do agree with the suggestion that we do the same with maybe energy efficiency standards. And I'm seeing nods for that. Okay. Anything else on this page before we move on? Commissioner Olson, go ahead.
All right, this is more a question for staff. One thought I just had tumbling around in my head as I read through this is the applicant, sorry, Part F, "The applicant shall record a covenant or deed restriction that ensures continuing rental or ownership of units subject to these affordability requirements consistent with these conditions for a period of no less than 50 years. If there is future redevelopment, how does that, how is that managed with this type of unit? Is it more difficult for an owner of this type of unit to redevelop? Like, could they pass on the deed restriction but add another unit in the future?" Is that, I'm assuming it's difficult, but I just wasn't sure.
Well, the deed restriction runs with the land. So if the ownership changes, the deed restriction is still in place, like any other deed restriction you have on your single-family home or other kind of home. So it is, it runs with that. Monitoring it, we work with Arch on the monitoring side of things, but that's typically for more of the larger type of units. So they're more involved for monitoring compliance with covenants. For the smaller units, yeah, we'd have to kind of figure out the best, the best way of doing that. I would suspect that it's not going to be a big rush for doing this. It might be a minimum number of units, and if it is, then we can either work with Arch on adding it to them, or as a staff, we can monitor if it's a small amount of units. So I guess this is, this is one of those things, like, I would not expect this to be a huge additional workload when this is implemented. We just need to then figure out, if it does become more popular, then we can then kind of figure out working with Arch on the monitoring side of things.
All right, Commissioner Dorian, and then Vice Chair Thompson.
I'm just, I'm trying to think through step by step what we're trying to regulate here. So just sort of thinking out loud, but also confirming with staff. So really, this, this only refers to the option in, I don't even know where this is, 18A3, where four units per lot are permissible if one unit on the lot of housing meets the affordable housing requirement, right? So we're only, we're only looking at, somebody wants to build at four units, not within quarter-mile distance, so it would have to be a lot outside of that. So we're regulating those instances, which in that case, I agree, that's, that's probably an age case. I guess the other part that I'm looking at is understanding here. So let's say somebody, I know this isn't real at the moment in terms of the amount of land that we have, but let's say somebody buys four lots next to each other. They wouldn't be able to have three lots where they put in luxury townhomes, and then one lot where they put in much more deeply developed units, based on what we're describing here. It would have to be per lot. They would have to, if four on one lot, one of those would be affordable. Four on another lot, one of those would be affordable. So I feel like, I definitely appreciate the discussion. I feel like where it's, the age cases, as you're describing, I feel like we're pretty covered. But generally, it's a good discussion for us to take into other discussions about affordable housing, I think, especially we're thinking more multifamily and, yeah, larger developments.
Yeah, thank you. Vice Chair Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With regard to the enforcement, I don't think we need to worry too much about that, because once there's a covenant on the deed, or whatever they put on the deed, when they try to sell the property, the escrow agent and, and all are going to have to reach out to the city to make sure that that covenant is dealt with properly, and it's acceptable, and how the deal's done is acceptable to the city. I believe I'm correct about that. All, every time I've had to go through a purchase of any property, the title insurance and all that, those folks look at this very carefully. And we would have to, we'd have to sign a waiver at the city side. I don't know if Commissioner Masiass wants to say what she thinks from her experience.
Commissioner Masiass.
I don't teel a ton with deed restrictions, but I do believe that's it, that you can deed the property, and that that deed stays with the property. That is, there is no way around that out of escrow.
Okay, that was great, robust discussion. Can we move on to the next page? Yeah, okay. So we were on the very next page. Any comments here? Yeah, the public benefit. Okay, Commissioner Vanderlin.
I spent actually quite a bit of time thinking about this whole section. What my major thought was trying to analyze in my own mind, what's really the benefit here? Are we really looking at an even deal? Equity here between what benefit, and what they would be giving up in terms of an incentive. And some of these here in particular, I have a hard time looking at this and saying, well, it's pretty clear to me what the benefit to the developer is. It's pretty substantial, it's financial, it's quantifiable. But then when I look at, what is the neighborhood benefit that derives from that? It's pretty subjective. And some of these, I think, are pretty minimal when you start weighing in not just the economic impact of this, but also the local impact of the community, the folks that live around there in terms of the increased density. When you start reducing things like rear setbacks, street setbacks, other things, height limits, you start to have a significant impact on the neighborhood and the people who live around it, that has nothing to do with, is not captured in the negative neighborhood benefit. I'll run through an example, and I'll look, Madam Chair, for some, some help on this one, because I'm not sure I entirely grasp the benefit. So looking at the first one here, we're going to, we're talking about decreasing the base impervious surface maximum requirement. Good thing, absolutely love that idea. From 40 to 50%. How significant is that in relationship to increasing the building height to 45 feet? I understand what the developer's going to get out of this, a substantial profit. This equivalent to the benefit that the city's going to receive in that additional 10% in an impervious surface. I don't think so. And I, but I don't understand what that benefit really is. Tracy, if you have some thoughts on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm not sure that I can tell you that the decreased base impervious surface that's being recommended is enough to provide substantial benefits, but I can tell you that in terms of, once a watershed reaches a certain level of impervious surface, you're pretty much guaranteed a loss of biodiversity and a loss of good salmon habitat, for example. And we're, we're near or over that in nearly all of our urban watersheds. But the one thing that we can do to, to make space for our neighbors and for the people who will be increasingly moving here as our climate changes, is, is, and to reduce impervious surfaces, is to build up instead of continuing to build out. So like, even in the urban growth area, if we, if we had space for, say, three families in a foot, in one footprint of a single-family home versus having to have three footprints of a single-family home to house those same people, that is, in my opinion, a net benefit in terms of like, reduction of impervious surface. So again, like, I can't really speak to if what's being proposed in terms of reductions is a good thing, but I, I can say overall that I feel like building up to decrease impervious surface rather than continuing to sprawl even within the urban growth area does seem like a good thing. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I get that. I think that's an important point. What, my follow-on thought after that, because I came to kind of the same conclusion, was that if you want to absorb density, one of the best ways to do that is to build up rather than, it actually may be your only choice, given the land use that we have available to us. But then it leads me to the thought of, well, we already know that we have sufficient land capacity to meet our 20-year projection. And make, we can fulfill our benefit without hitting the accelerator here on increased density. So that leads me to thinking, why would we want to accept increased density here that we don't need, which may have an adverse impact on the people who are living around this new higher, more dense property? So this is the thought that's in my mind, and I haven't come to a conclusion to it, but I'm finding it very difficult to parse out of this what the neighborhood benefit is. I very clearly see the benefit to the developer, how this would allow us to increase density, but I'm not sure how that benefits the community and why we need to do it.
Commissioner Olson.
Yeah, I actually misread this section three times somehow. I kept reading max, not base impervious density. That being said, I wrote down some thoughts, because I was, I went and looked up, well, what does base impervious surface maximum require? And from what I can tell, it's just low-impact development features for, which is basically drainage mitigation, is my understanding. And there's some other features of that, but it's landscaping, that type of thing, betterments in that sense. What I'm wondering is, why we aren't attaching, decreasing the maximum impervious surface area with this? Because what I see happening is, if you're going to implement lid features anyways, then now you can just build the 45 feet to your point. And so I'm not opposed to the 45 feet. What I'm opposed to is, I don't see a, a large difference between this, because it's just a trigger that you get that we had previously when you were approaching that max impervious area. So people would have already been triggering this, and that just effectively increases the building height to your point. So I, what I'd like to see for this is, potentially we just decrease the base impervious surface area across the board to these numbers, and then we have this incentive for lots that meet a lower threshold in maximum impervious surface area instead. The intent there being, yeah, you'll have a taller building, but less of the lot will be taken up with that building. So on average, it should be further away from lot lines and the frontage, et cetera. I say on average, because, you know, maybe site constraints, you've got a tree on one side of the lot, you don't want to hit that tree, you end up closer on the other side. So it might not necessarily be closer overall, but, or sorry, it would be further overall, but it might not be closer in each, to each of your neighbors. One neighbor might have a, an issue with that, I suppose, depending on the lot. But that's kind of my thoughts on this one.
Any responses, Commissioner Masiass?
I, I, I really don't know how comfortable I am with increasing building height, to be honest. When I look at, like, where we want our density, and where we want gentle density, I see gentle density in these neighborhoods. And as you drive around and you look, how many buildings do we see are 45 feet high? And what does that start to look like? So, I mean, I know we, where we want to get the most bang for our buck is in our downtown corridor, where we do want to go up, and we do want to get a little bit more density. But do we want that? And the objective of missing middle in its entirety is single-family house, right? It fits into the same footprint. And I'm not seeing that footprint anywhere out here. I just don't see 45 feet height anywhere. So that's a real, you know, that's a big trade-off. It's like, how much, right, how much neighborhood benefit is there to that? So I, I, I don't feel comfortable with that.
Commissioner Olson.
Yeah, I, I hear that. I would take a step back and say, that is the modern inference on missing middle, is that it needs to fit within a single-family house. Historically, we are referencing a period where we didn't have single-family zoning, and people just built things, and then single-family zoning was implemented, partly due to the FHA, Federal Housing Authority, and we put in these practices, which artificially limited how people could build. So I agree, to, to a degree, I agree with that. That being said, I could see it being useful for lots where you're going to have a larger development occur. And I would rather see building up than, even if it's not as consistent with neighborhood character in those instances, than, than building out or looking at another incentive where we end up with significantly more impervious area, especially because I think these would probably be fairly limited use cases.
Commissioner Vanderlin.
Yeah, again, I agree that building up, if you're going to add density, building up is a smart way to do it. But I think the problem, or at least part of the problem I'm having here, is we're looking at missing middle separate from the overall development scheme that we've been talking about. We've talked about a low, medium, and high-density area. And when you're talking about adding density through height, I think it belongs in that high-density area that we've laid out already, and not necessarily in the missing. When I look at the, what we've got today in the single-family neighborhood, it's a pretty light touch on the environment and in terms of pervious or impervious services. So I don't really see the trade-off in the, in missing middle areas, or increased height. I just don't see that as where we want to have.
I'm going to go.
Or need to have.
Thank you. I'm going to go to, Debbie, would you like to say something?
I'm trying to figure out where this is going, because this, this code was trying to reflect the discussion that Planning Commission had at the last meeting with what to flex, which sections of code to flex to get what you wanted. And so I'm, I'm not sure then, it doesn't seem to me right now that you're on the same page. So again, this was based on your last discussion, and this seemed to be the best way to flex the, the impervious surface and height to still allow those additional kinds of units. And this is more a choice, is adding in a choice of units into single-family neighborhoods. So I don't think we can kind of, and it's limited to single-family neighborhoods. So we're not talking about the higher-density neighborhoods, you know, R12, 18, and, and up. This is to provide essentially housing choice, and what we need to flex in the regulations to allow that. So if we're back to the discussion that you had last meeting, I guess I just need to try and figure out from a staff perspective about what else we can change to get the housing choice, that you wanted to minimize impervious surface, and the way to kind of figure out that, if you're doing that, you have to do something, and that was to allow the additional height. So I'm not sure where to, where to take this, or help you get to a resolution.
Okay, Vice Chair Thompson has something to say, and, and then Commissioner Olson, and then I will say something. Vice Chair Thompson? I think you need to unmute Vice Chair.
How's that?
That's great.
You know, I think we're all a little confused here, and I appreciate our planning directors. our planning directors view on this. So I was wondering so that we, at least myself, and I hope others, would have a clear understanding of how this chart is, would be implemented. If Todd or Debbie could just walk through a couple examples of how the benefit and the incentive and, and the types would work using this little, so that we're, we are all on the same understanding and this, and the same starting point here. And I would appreciate that because I'm a little lost with all the discussion going on.
So if you scroll up to the public benefits and development incentives, so, so generally I think what, you know, if, if there's a proposed development, we're, as Debbie was just talking, we're trying to figure out ways to help encourage these, these types of units to be developed. So if somebody was going to be coming into the city, you know, in order to have specific types that, you know, say they wanted to do triplex cottage or duplex housing, then they, they would go to this table that would be implemented in a particular code section. And then there would be potential, you know, the chart would be drafted and such to, to allow them to have these incentives to increase their development. I'm not saying this very clearly, but I think the, 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 the option is to, to have this as, you know, what, what are, I'm kind of losing my train of thought.
Can I suggest something to, did I skip over you, Commissioner Vanderlin? I, I don't want to skip over you.
Maybe I could just add something.
You, you go, okay, you go ahead.
At, at the risk of being legalistic here, I think we have a base case. I think that's where we have to start the discussion from. Our base case is we're going to use the same footprint of a single family home as it is today. And what we're having in this schedule here are exceptions to that base case. So the question I think in front of us is, is the trade off that's suggested here worth, is the squeeze worth the juice? Is what it comes down to. So are we willing to trade off a 10% increase in impervious surfaces or decrease in pervious surfaces? For, to, by allowing a developer to put an extra floor on a house? Is that additional height? Something that's as, as much value as that's increased surface? I think you go through each one of these and you're asking the same question. Are we, are we getting a public benefit here that's equivalent or worth what we'd be giving up? Because you are giving up something. There is a, we'd, we'd, so I'll stop there.
Okay, so my comment is that one thing I wanted to offer up to my fellow commissioners is that I, I have been thinking about footprint just as the space that a dwelling unit takes up on the ground. But then envelope is the total kind of space that the structure takes up. And I, for me, it's helpful to separate those two things. I don't know if it is helpful for any of you to separate those two things, but if we, if it was for all of you and we could kind of think about it that way, we, I think that could facilitate some of our conversation here. And then I will say that perhaps what we really need to do here is decide as a commission whether we are in favor. I think I'm just restating what Commissioner Vanderlin said. Are we in favor of for a reduction? And I would really want it to be a reduction in impervious surface over what a developer would do with a single family development? Are we, are we willing to allow for greater height? So I, I think that for me is the question that I would like us to answer. And then I would like staff and Kim Lee Horn to assure us that the code that they were writing would get at that, what we want. So maybe what we should do at this point, unless there are any comments, is we, I just want to take your temperature and say like, who is in favor of increasing height? In exchange for less impervious surface? Yes, no, and who is not? And we can, can move forward from there. Commissioner, Commissioner Dorian?
Yeah, just one, one comment going into that. I, I think just from a slightly different perspective as, as to what we are thinking about. I, I think we do have not necessarily over represent, excuse me, not necessarily over representation, but we have strong representation of homeowners on the, the Planning Commission. There are a lot more people living in Kenmore than just homeowners. And we heard from them a lot in surveys that they want housing choice. So I, I think it's not just about our personal desires for where we would want to place more density. I think we do have to take into account what we heard from folks in surveys and, and discussions as, as well. So that said, I think actually the building height one for me is the toughest one to start with because I, I think there's a lot of concern around that in the community more broadly. There are, there are others in here that I think might be a, a different conversation, but the, the height, especially 45 feet feels difficult.
Commissioner Olson?
Yeah, I would agree. This is definitely a more contentious one to start with. I would say I am generally in support of increasing building heights over increasing impervious surface area. And I, and I think this kind of goes back to the conversation of we feel in our single family houses and our missing middle houses that we are not impactful on the environment because we have what feels like less impervious surface area. But when we crunch the numbers, it becomes quite clear we are more impactful on the environment fundamentally than our neighbors over in the higher intensity land uses. In terms of, and they are called higher intensity land uses as the name suggests, because they are higher intensity on the environment for their footprint, for that location, because they have more pervious surface area, but per person it is far less. That said, I understand the concerns around building up these taller homes in some of these areas. And when I see this, my intent would more along the lines be there's four lots and there's a large forest in the back of those lots. Instead of seeing that forest be bulldozed and more single family houses go up, I would rather see a cluster of taller buildings that are more akin to maybe some of the nicer townhouses that we've seen. Now that being said, I can't control design. And we have seen pictures of designs that are, leave things to be desired. But I don't think we should write this off just yet. I think we should consider it a little bit deeper.
Okay. So at this point I'm going to ask if you are ready to kind of say yea or nay on your position on this, let's go ahead and do it. If people just are feeling like they're not ready, we can move on to talk about some of these other neighborhood benefits and, and circle back around. So are you all ready to say yea or nay on this one at this point? Okay, I'm getting one person who's saying no. So we're going to move on to a different one and we'll circle back around. Go ahead, Commissioner Vanderlin.
What would move me to being able to say yea or nay would maybe have some input back from the consultants. If you start with the base case and you would say, okay, today you have to have 40% impervious surface. 50% through the standard, what would that be worth? But what do you gain there? That's my base question because I just don't understand versus the impact of a 45 foot height versus an extra. What does that, what does that gain us? If we were talking about a citywide change, then I think you magnify it into something that could be extreme. But we're not, we're talking about probably a one Z's or two Z's development would come along. And what you're really impacting is not the city, you're impacting the four people who are living around there who now have a 45 foot monolith in their backyard or on the side. And I'm looking at that and saying, okay, what's the value to the community as a whole? Probably not very much, but I don't know. I'd like to know. What's the value to the people who are going to be most impacted, which are the people living around it? That, and we're not, we're still having choice here. Nothing has changed. The base case allows choice. What it does is it also sets some, some standards about setbacks, heights and whatnot. That's what we're looking to trade off. So I don't have the answer to what's the real value for that one lot having this much more pervious surface.
Yes, that is, that's fair. Vice Chair Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I get the drift about what is the, the, the feelings of those of you about part of the big issue is what's happening around that particular lot? And that is probably neighborhood benefit, specific neighborhood benefit. And I appreciate the concern about the height issue of the 45 feet. I'm one of them that was talking about the shoreline effect as we would walk, drive around in city of shoreline. We see these 45 foot buildings, quite a few. And I'm sure that we are, are a little on the shy side to have our community looking like that. Completely appreciate that. But what is the difference between a 10% impervious surface? Well, here's the problem. So if we have a hundred lots, and it can easily turn into this, a hundred lots of whatever square feet and we lose 10% of the non-impervious surface to impervious surface. That is a major loss to our city and to our environment as a whole. It's just like saying, we as Kenmore are a pretty small little piece of the pie when we're thinking about climate change. But it's also important for us to do our part. It may be small, but if our hope and wish is that every small part of the United States, state of Washington, King County would do the right thing. And, and only I mean that in generality and try to adopt standards that are more conducive to environmental safety and climate concerns. Then we will have gone a long ways. So I am concerned about the loss of impervious surface. It's, it, it causes multiple problems with our city infrastructure, our, our streams, all of that stuff. Our chairs can speak more eloquently to this than I could ever hope to. So if I, I'm, I would vote for the some sort of a, a concept of increasing building height. I don't know if 45 is the right one or not, but something along those lines. And not increasing impervious surface. And finally, my comment is, is that, you know, right now we don't need to be unanimous on something. I, I, I don't want to see personally, I don't want to see the commission all split up into halves. But we, I think that we do need to give the staff some direction of which way we're leaning. And that doesn't mean we can't change our lean next meeting. And I, I, I know Debbie and Todd, you're sitting there shaking your head. Don't do that to us. But you know, I, I think that we need to go somewhere. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Thompson. I'm, I think I would like to, to move us along. I, I know that this feels like a, a big decision and it, and it is. Because I think that there are many different viewpoints and different stakeholders. And I think that, I think that we have to, we're, we're not making a decision for all time here. We are making a decision that is going to move us forward incrementally. And it is always something that can be revisited as we revisit these elements in our comprehensive plan. So I, I know that I got an indication that someone wasn't ready to make a decision about how they feel about this issue, but we continued to discuss it, which makes me feel like we, we probably do need to kind of make a decision so that we can move on. And again, it's not a forever decision. So I think if we could decide as a commission whether we are in favor of increasing height for the purposes of reducing impervious service in our development. And then maybe asking the questions, Mike, that you had of Kim Lee Horn and the people who are developing our code to see where exactly it's getting us. I think that would be fruitful for us in this moment. So I'm going to try to look around and see if, if you are in favor of allowing for increased height for the purposes of reducing impervious service. If you could just nod, then I, or give a thumbs up, then I will know that that's where you are. Okay, I'm, I'm seeing we're split right now, three and three. Okay, Debbie and Todd, can you have, can you have Kim Lee Horn bring back some code that would do this and, and, and some maybe more information about what that would actually mean for our community for the next meeting? Okay. And then we can talk about it again then, and we can either recommend that we move forward with that code or not. All right. Any other comments on the neighborhood benefit table? Commissioner Dorian?
I, I still agree and, and understand what Commissioner Thompson and Vanetinck and Olson are saying around the reduction of impervious services. I think there's probably a straighter line in the minds of the community between the parking benefit and reduction of impervious surface because that, that seems to go one for one more easily than increasing height. Now, parking is still a hot button issue, don't get me wrong, but I, I think that there's easier trade off there than there might be in, in height for me.
Okay. So Commissioner Dorian, are you suggesting that you support the development incentive of one off street parking space? Yeah, what in the table are you suggesting that you're in favor of?
The example there I, I like as, as an idea, particularly because I think cottage housing is more designed for seniors. So we're, we're getting a community benefit as well as a neighborhood benefit out, out of that. If we were to explore other parking options instead of the height option, that would be interesting to me to explore. Like some, some of the, I think the reason we're struggling, some of these are hard to really engage with until we see them. And then suddenly you see 45 feet and there's, there's a reaction, but I, I, I think it's worth exploring that. And some of the others as, as well, I mean, if I can talk to the whole table, the, the building height limited to 27 feet. That to me is directly aligned with what I was trying to achieve with this is, is that I'm trying to avoid seeing the only type of middle housing being built is townhomes of around about 35 feet, like those ones that I shared up by Kemmerer Elementary. No, sorry, Kemmerer Middle. I always get in trouble with my wife for that. I'd say my kids are at Kemmerer Elementary. No, they're not. So the, yeah, the, the, the reason for that, I, I think is we, we want to encourage these different housing, housing types. And we know that developers now do have a plan for how they're going to build townhomes in, in this model. But I think we want other models as well that aren't quite as large in the envelope as you were describing. So that idea that we could say, if you reduce to 27 feet, you can have reduced setbacks because we're assuming you're going to have to configure the, the the building in a different way to achieve it. That to me is a neighborhood benefit because then suddenly you're not having a lot, and a number of, a number of our communities have smaller single family homes already. So we're, we're enabling that community, neighborhood benefit of having a more braided height range within a, a community, but we're doing what we, we want in terms But we're doing what we, we want in terms of having housing choice of, of different housing types. So I really like that one. I think I understand the redevelopment existing family, a single-family home, but I, I want to make sure that I do understand that. So the density bonus of two additional units totaling up to four units on, on the lot. So this would be for lots where normally the density they're allowed is just two per, per lot. And then if, if they're redeveloping in this way within the home, they get another two, so it gets up to a minimum of four. So is this the idea that a developer would come in, redevelop the house, but then also redevelop like two DADUs as well? Yeah, I mean, I, I, the, these, that's why, like, I think that first one around the height is, is difficult. Some, some of these other ones I, I can resonate with a bit more and think kind of also more importantly, I think we could sell into the community a, a bit more. So, yeah, I, I mean, overall, I, I like this idea. It's specifically for me, as I said, my, my concern was, we know now some developers who develop a lot in Kenmore have a plan of big townhomes, like big duplex-style townhomes, of which we do want some, don't get me wrong, but we don't want that to be all that's developed. So I, I think some of these to ena, to enable that variety in housing would be a good benefit.
Thank you. Commissioner Vanderlin?
I really appreciated Commissioner Dorian's, I think, direction that's trying to take us with the first section here, which is, I think we're all in agreement on one thing. We would like to see a reduction in impervious services. I think we all understand the value of that. We've got kind of fixated on this particular is the only option. I think pointing us at parking and potentially thinking about others, there are probably some more efficient ways of doing this that would have a lesser impact on the neighborhoods than this particular. That's what it comes down to after listening to your, that's where my mind has come across us. I'm looking for a way to achieve our goal, which is less impervious services with the least amount of impact on the neighborhood. This ain't it.
Yes.
There's some other things out there starting with R.
Go ahead, Todd.
I also had similar issues with the redevelopment of existing single-family. Love the idea. I think that's a great way to go. But I think maybe we need to describe this a little differently, because I had the same problem myself, trying to visualize. What are you talking about? How could you have a four-unit duplex? That does, I, I think what we're saying here is you would have an existing single-family home that would become a duplex, and then you could build another stacked flat two-unit on top of that. Same footprint, but you'd have four units. But I'm, I'm struggling with trying to visualize how that would be, and I'm just guessing. Some additional, excuse me, description of that would be helpful.
Yes, I got caught up a little bit in what that would look like myself. Todd, did you want to respond to some of that?
I just wanted to circle back. So earlier you mentioned, you know, on the, the first, going back to the first item, you were split as a commission, and you wanted, and Chair Banaschinsky, you mentioned to have, you know, how to have Kim Lee Horn describe what this means either way. But I also heard Commissioner Vanderlin talking about, like, about the different potential other options that could be are not necessarily replaced, but considered in terms of these neighborhood development benefits. So kind of maybe just thinking about some various tweaks or changes to these that might make, because you're all saying that you like the impervious surface option, but it's the height and maybe some other little things in here that are giving you some, some, you know, challenges. And we could talk to Nick and Clay and see what other potential, you know, variables we could work with. Does that kind of summarize it?
I think so. I saw almost universal nods about the idea of looking at how we can play with parking requirements, for example, to reduce impervious services. I would still, since we were split exactly in half, like to see and hear more from Kim Lee Horn about what it would look like to exchange height for a reduction in impervious surfaces. And then at that time, we can, you know, move forward with it or not, as the case may be. And if he has any other ideas about code that would get at the same idea of reducing impervious surface, I think we would all be open to it. Yeah. Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Vanderlin.
Uh, just to continue down the list, as, as Commissioner Dorian did, on the twenty-seven-foot height limit, trading that, trading reduced rear street setbacks for that, I'm okay with that. But I would like to see something more here in terms of, if you're going to reduce down to something like ten feet, has some kind of requirement here for landscaping? How, how kind of buffer, landscaping buffer, natural buffers could we add in there that would make that? When I look at some of the pictures of where you get down to a ten-foot or even a five-foot separation, that gets to be, I think, that's enough to be acceptable for most people. soften that considerably with, with the right kind of landscaping. So having some kind of design requirement in here that would have to be presented as part of the building proposal and what that would look like and what would be acceptable.
Commissioner Olson?
Yeah. Not to jump back to that first one too much, I do want to make it very clear. The way that the benefit is written currently for building height in particular, I do have concerns because I don't see this necessarily reducing the size or the footprint of the building. I just see it increasing the total size that a developer could build. So I would want to see a reduction in maximum impervious surface area. Otherwise, I, I don't see this doing what we're intending. Just to be very explicit on that. And I am less concerned about the height of a building if you have a larger setback in some of those spaces. Ironically, I also have concerns though if the setback is too far. Moving on down to the next one with the twenty-seven-foot maximum, I would actually be interested in potentially seeing that rear setback reduced down to five feet in some instances as opposed to ten feet. That being said, I agree with Commissioner, Commissioner Vanderlin's point about landscaping and the like. I think the five-foot buffer for me really is probably more related to ADUs, well, DADUs specifically, than most of the missing middle housing types. But I think cottage housing and missing middle kind of overlap there, which is why I wanted to voice that five-foot, because I see it being difficult on some of the smaller lots to do otherwise. That all said, I would also want to remind the commission that there is a minimum distance between buildings of fifteen feet elsewhere in the code. So if we have a ten-foot separation on rear setbacks, and we've got two rear houses again, or, or rear lot lines, that's at least twenty feet between the houses. Otherwise, it's at least fifteen feet still. But I do like the idea of potential landscape mitigation or something along those lines if we are below, if we're ten feet or below, is what I would like to see. And I am, would like to voice that I'm open to going down to five specifically for the rear setback, so long as it's under that height limit. I would also voice, real fast, there is other items in the code that explicitly prevent windows, windows need to be opaque if they are facing into someone's private property as well. Or they need to have, what are they called? Skylights? So I think some of the concerns I heard were along privacy constraints. And I think the code has already considered a lot of those items. Another concern I heard was, to your point, Commissioner Vanderlin, landscaping buffers. Do we have greenery? Do we have separation between, and a distinction between parcels and people's space? So I just want to voice that, because I think we can potentially have both.
Okay, any other comments on the neighborhood benefit table? And any opposition to asking Kim Lee Horn to move forward with these neighborhood benefits? Go ahead, Commissioner Dorian.
This one, because it's the only one I didn't cover, because I needed a few minutes to think about it. So the, the last one as well, just, just to understand the intent there. So the, the gross floor area for an individual cottage could be reduced to a maximum of twelve-hundred square feet, so, to pull it down. But then there would be a density bonus. So, so is, is that suggesting that there would be smaller cottages, but they could build more of them? Is, is, is that the idea?
And that's what I'm gathering, is just ha, having these small, smaller types of units, you know, small houses, small lots, but just having a cluster of little units versus having these, you know, twelve-hundred square feet or larger types of cottages, which I don't know, and that, once you get to that range, it's not really much of a cottage anymore anyway, so.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was just clarifying. I mean, I, I guess I, I like that idea. I, I the, the main reason I like that idea is because, again, cottage housing, I think, is going to be more targeted towards seniors. So, and I, I think if it's smaller, then it's more affordable. I guess to Commissioner Vanderlin's point before, I'm not sure how we message that to the community as a neighborhood benefit. And we might need some help from Kim Lee Horn in kind of describing why having more smaller homes is, is a, is a neighborhood benefit. It's not that I'm against the idea. I, I think, I think it's good as from a community benefit of having additional housing for seniors. But I, I don't know about the, the neighborhood benefit aspect.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, and I think it is something that we probably ourselves should remind ourselves to return to so that we can articulate it, because we tend to kind of like talk at all levels. And when we get down in the weeds, I think we're not always talking explicitly about these issues. But we should keep them top of mind so that we can communicate well about it. Go ahead, Commissioner Vanderlin.
Mickey Point, the last one on the cottage. Do we really, are we really saying that we want to have a gross foot area for individual cottage reduced to a maximum of twelve-hundred? Or is that a minimum of twelve-hundred? I read this, it says, so I could have a hundred square foot? Or over twelve-hundred?
The, the one other thing I think I, I need to remind myself continually is that we are kind of putting these guard rails in place, I guess, if you think about our comprehensive planning that way. But then the, the market will do what the market thinks it can sell. So if the market doesn't think it can sell a one-hundred-square-foot cottage, it's not going to build it. So I think that we kind of have to just do our best, but we can't plan for all those different kind of contingencies, I guess. Yeah.
It's the language.
Yeah.
I absolutely agree with you. The market will give us what the mar, markets will give us what we want.
Well, the markets will give us what they want. Yeah. Okay, so just one more time, is everybody okay with having Kim Lee Horn move forward with these neighborhood benefits showing us code? Or do we want any, to see any changes? Yes? Commissioner Olson?
Uh, sorry, yes, I'm, I'm in favor of that. But I would also want to speak on this twelve-hundred-square-foot item as well. I was a little confused by the density bonus of up to on this particular section. Is that up to the maximum per acre density? What is, what is that limited by? Or is it just saying fifty percent on top of whatever, whatever it may have been? So you could have a, I don't know, theoretically, six units on a minimum-sized lot. I don't think that would ever happen based off of some of the other restrictions I've seen. But just wanted to voice that as a question for the consultant.
Okay, and then I think I have one more question before we move on from this page, unless anybody else does. But kind of returning to one of the public comments we heard about the standards are not applicable to development, redevelopment, or remodeling an existing or new principal single-family unit. I took that to mean that these neighborhood benefit incentives would not apply if the home, the single-family unit were being remodeled to remain a single-family unit. But that they potentially would apply if that single-family unit was being developed into a middle housing development? Am I misreading that?
That's, that's how I interpreted it. It was for new, new development.
Okay, Commissioner Olson and Commissioner Macias after that.
Yeah, I, I, that's how I read that as well. And the framework here that I just kind of want to make explicit, because I think Commissioner Dorian, you alluded to this earlier, and I wanted to respond and, and didn't. Going to number three, redevelop an existing single-family unit with a duplex or stacked flat and maintain the base floor footprint of the existing home. When I read that, I assumed that could mean you could put an additional duplex on that same lot that isn't part of that original footprint. And I think I've got some concerns around that, just incense of, I think, I think the original intent here was along the lines of trying to decrease, impervious footprint decrease, that type of impact. And potentially, you know, you redevelop the existing unit and then build as large of a duplex as you possibly can right behind it. If that's the intent, and I think a developer would do that if you're trying to break even on some of these projects. I mean, it costs money to do this work, and you are going to want to maximize the benefit you can get once you pay for utility connection, impact fees, et cetera. So I, I think that might have gotten a little bit away from the intent that we had. That being said, I think we also had a separate desire to try and reutilize existing housing stock and structures, because that's generally less expensive than alternatives. On that note, I would assume that this would mean you could not turn this into a duplex necessarily and have two ADUs, at least not the way DADUs, sorry, DADUs, at least not the way they're currently defined, because that is not necessarily considered missing middle that's more associated with a, a single-family house where you have an ADU or a DADU. So those would be distinct, is my understanding. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that's the case. I know an ADUs are allowed to go towards the density, but it's not one of the types of middle housing that's in the, the list of the nine types.
I see. So that's, so, so it could potentially, if you had two DA to use, you could then choose to build, take a single-family house and turn it into a duplex, but not necessarily the other way around. Okay, that, I mean, that answers that question for me, and it also shows how it can't, like, I think to Mike Vanderlin's point from like four meetings ago, forever scale and you always have more density. On a kind of separate, completely separate section, but related note, there was, oh, sorry, I need to pull this up here. Took a picture of it just because I wrote down my note separately. So this is not a portion of code that we changed, but it's related to some of these other codes. Oh, gosh, where is this? Uh, okay, I think it's, gosh, I didn't show which section this was a part of. So this is a portion of code where we changed one line, not in the most, not in this change, but I believe on the February eighteenth meeting changes to add unit lot subdivisions. And we're talking about, I'll read it out loud. More than one single detached dwelling unit may be allowed on an individual lot through the conditional use permit process. So one DADU can be allowed without a conditional use permit, but more than one requires a condition, conditional use permit. And a conditional use permit is not required for lots and subdivisions, short subdivisions, unit lot subdivisions. That's what we added was the unit lot subdivisions. Or binding site plans approved as multiple unit lots for accessory dwelling units. So my question on this one is, we don't have any limits on ADUs on that, but So my question on this one is, we don't have any limits on ADUs on that, but DAUs in particular. So if you had multiple single family homes on a larger existing lot, why are we limiting DAU construction beyond state requirements? Where it would typically just be one, I believe it's one, sorry, two ADUs, whether it's attached or detached. We're still allowing attached, but we're limiting detached. So if we had multiple houses on one lot, that's half an acre, let's say. As it stands now, it seems like they would need a conditional use permit to build, say, three DAUs, one for each single family house. But if they were to subdivide, they'd be allowed to do that. But then they'd have to go through the impact fees, additional constraints that subdivision requires that they wouldn't necessarily have to do for ADU, so they could increase their housing footprint or whatever to make the ADUs work. And then we're just kind of arbitrarily saying DAUs can't work. So I'm, I just want a voice to the commission. I personally would like to make that more consistent and just allow the same number of DAUs on a lot. And I don't think this, what, this is kind of a niche edge case that I don't think will happen on very many lots. It's pretty limited at this point in the city, um, to see a lot that large with that many units on it. But I'm just not quite sure why we're requiring subdivision for that. Um, I'll see if I can find the actual section. Sorry, I didn't write it down.
Okay, so I'm gonna, Commissioner Macias had her hand raised. And then since this, is this a topic that wasn't related to this page? Okay, so that's okay, we'll, we'll come back to that at the, at the end when I open it up. But so don't, don't forget, look for it, make a note, and we'll come back to it. So Commissioner Macias?
Okay, on that, on the third neighborhood benefit, just so, on, on two above, it's the standards are not applicable to development, redevelopment, but the neighborhood benefit is to redevelop or maintain existing? Is that language right? That does seem like a that does seem like that's conflicting, doesn't it? Okay.
Commissioner Vanderlin?
Yes, I had the same trouble. That's what I was trying to express earlier. I think we need to have some feedback or a second look on this from the consultants. I'm not sure what it is they're telling us. There is conflict here, as I said, I don't know how you have a four unit duplex. That, that, you know, I, I just don't understand. And they're saying you could redevelop a single family unit with a duplex or stacked flat and maintain the base floor print of the existing home. So are we retaining the existing home? Are we, are we scraping off the existing home and building something? I don't get what it is they're trying to do.
Yeah, I had that same problem.
Gives me, I don't, then I don't understand what the public benefit is.
And I couldn't also understand how we could achieve four units in a stacked flat with a thirty-five foot height limit.
Exactly.
So, yeah, I think we need maybe a little bit of clarity around that.
If they're trying to create an incentive here to maintain an existing single family and turning into a missing middle, I can get that, I can't see that.
Yeah, so can you, can we ask Kim Lee Horn to call? Okay. Yeah, and I, I think one more comment I have is that I think I would like us to be mindful that as we go through this exercise, that we are actually empowering people to do the things that we are saying we're allowing and not kind of creating these like hurdles where we say we're allowing it, but then we're writing the code so that we don't. Okay, let's move on to the next page that has highlighted changes. Looks like we have to do some more scrolling.
I think that might be it.
Oh, there's ti- tiny stuff in cottage housing or not?
Yes, there is. It's on, it starts E, a cottage development shall provide a minimum of two hundred and fifty square feet. That's the first, um, line on the page. And for me, my PDF page says one hundred and seventy-nine, but I think that might be different for other people because I had a hard time following along before when.
Uh, I've got one sixty-two, page one sixty-two in the one hundred and sixty-six page version.
Commissioner Macias is nodding. Does that help you, Todd?
I see one six, one sixty-two, one sixty-three or something, right?
Yeah.
It's eighteen seventy-five zero three zero?
Yes, that's right. Comments from the commission on those highlighted changes? I'm seeing some head shakes, no comments. Okay, let's look for the next, oh, there, then there's some on the next page following. Parking provided in garages shall meet the following standards, this, yep, Todd's got it. Any commissioner comments on these? Oh, one head shake, no.
I gue- I guess, I guess.
Okay, Commissioner, Commissioner Dorian, go ahead.
One, one question which I'm sure is, is covered. Because cottage housing is middle housing, we're not allowed to apply more restrictive requirements to it than other forms of housing or si- single family homes. Are any of these more restrictive is a question I would just, I guess, push back to the consultants. Because we're, we're saying that garages have to be, have certain elements to them and the mechanic and utility have to be hidden away. These, these sound like good ideas, but just given that the law is that we can't make more restrictive requirements in single family homes, are they?
I didn't catch that, but since they, they refer to cottage housing developments, they see, it seems so different to me from single family homes that I didn't catch that it could be more restrictive. I think, because it doesn't seem apples to apples to me. Commissioner Olson?
Um, I, I, I don't think the commission will agree with me on this, but my gut reaction is we should just make these apply to single family houses. That being said, I'm reading these and I can see challenges with that, because most single family houses don't conform to these standards. We've got the driveway and the garage right up in the front, um, which personally I don't love. I, I personally like having the doors in the front and the windows in the front and, and, uh, being able to see the street and see what's happening outside without having a garage in the way. But I could see it to Commissioner, uh, Dorian's point, be more restrictive as a result of this. I also think it's generally better designed, especially for cottage housing. So I'm not sure if we should maybe just change the word shall potentially and make that, you know, a preference for. And I think most developers are going to pick that anyways, because it's going to make their cottage housing units sell better, but.
Well, Todd and Debbie, does this run afoul of the requirement that our code for middle housing not be more restrictive than single family code?
I think typically for cottage housing, you don't have, um, a, a garage with each unit. So this is addressing the fact that if they don't have that, where are you going to put the, the garage? So it's, it's very different than a single family home where you have an attached garage, because cottage housing, you, you typically don't, they're provided separately. So I don't think it runs, runs afoul.
Okay.
But we can double check.
Oh, Commissioner Olson, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think the thing that hangs me up on that is the garage elevations visible from a public street shall be designed to minimize visual impact through the use of fencing, lattices, landscaping, or other screening methods, which, I don't know, to me, like, is the opposite of the majority of single family housing design, where the garage is front and center, driveway is front and center on like every new, new construction for single family housing. I see how it makes sense if it's for a separated garage. So maybe we just add language for just detached garage units? And I, I, I would imagine that would have to apply to things like covered parking as well, if we wanted to keep it in line with single family, um, or at least not make it more restrictive then.
I don't think any cottage homes have attached garages. Is that not, not true? As we've been talking, go ahead, Commissioner Macias.
I mean, that would affect building footprint, wouldn't it? I mean, that, that's increasing your maximum of twelve hundred square foot. If you have a garage, isn't that calking into your, into your building footprint? I mean, you're going to lose, I just don't know how many cottage housing units have an attached garage.
The examples that I've seen around Puget Sound are pretty much just clustered, and then you've had, you've got your parking off to the side in a row, you know, ki- kind of like a, you know, they're not the same, but apartments, you know, they'll have some garaged, um, you, you know, units, you know, where you can park your car inside a garage.
Which we have in the, on the page, if you scroll up on the page just above the one we're on. It says parking shall be provided and meet the following design requirements, shall be clustered within a common parking area that is accessible but peripheral to the units. So I read, I read this as no cottage house would have an attached garage, that all parking on a cottage house development would be clustered. Go ahead, Commissioner Olson.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think this makes sense. I just, I, I agree with Commissioner Dorian. How do we balance this with code around ensuring this is less restrictive? Or, or not more restrictive than what's applied to single family housing? And I think the challenge there is that cottages don't have it attached to their house. Also, if it was attached, my understanding is that, that, actually, I guess it's not my understanding, I'm not sure. Is it considered towards the footprint? Or is that, does that depend on if, whether it's finished or unfinished? For a single family house? I, I would think in the instance of cottage housing, parking should not be considered part of the footprint of the unit, or that's going to dramatically limit the amount of space available.
Okay, well, it sounds like staff will make sure that we're not running afoul of our state mandated, mean mandated requirement that these restrictions not be more restrictive. Um, any other comments on this page? Commissioner Olson, another comment? Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I really should have mentioned this as the last one. I am wondering why we have this up to four garages may be attached to one another. Is there issues that occur when we have more than four units? I, I don't know, I, I don't think this is normally an issue with smaller developments, but I could see a larger cottage housing development where you have, I don't know, sixteen units or something like that. And you just want one parking garage as opposed to two effectively is, what's the intent behind that? Or is that a question for, uh, Kim Lee Horn?
Do you know, Todd, if this came from, did Commerce provide any model cottage housing code?
Not on this, no, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So I think this was just a, some op- options to consider, but we can ask.
Okay. All right, let's look for our next page if, oh, no, we made it to the end. Okay, so I would like to make some space for commissioners to raise any other code-related issues. Commissioner Olson, are you ready to come back around to yours?
I cannot find that particular code section for the life of me. I might just bring this up at the next meeting.
Could, if you can find it outside the meeting and email it to Todd and Debbie, then they can be prepared to bring it back to us.
I can do that, yeah. It'll be a lot easier with Ctrl F. It's just, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments related to code, Commissioner Dorian?
The table on page one eleven. Uh, my version of it, which is, um, eighteen twenty-one zero three zero and the, the table B. I did share an email already, I'll wait, I'll wait together, uh, one, one, one eleven. Yeah, I, I shared an email of, of thought already around the base density and maximum density. But there, there's a couple of other things as well, but I'll, I'll revisit just so it's, it's on the record, that the, the base density point. I think that the last time middle housing came around, as well as looking at the base unit density per lot, we also had to look at the, the, um, base density per acre. So that, that was something that I was thinking we would, we would need the consultants to take a look at. But there's, there's that, there's that bit. The, the other thing, and I, I, I think other folks had questions about this as well, is if we're exempting R one, do we, does it still need to have a, a base of two dwelling units per lot? And, and I guess that might come down to ADUs as well, because our, our alternative compliance, this is a broader question is, so alternative compliance is for middle housing, so we're kind of exempting R one and the waterway adjacent R four from middle housing. But they can still apply ADUs, is, is that correct? Then we're not exempting ADUs from R one and R four?
I don't believe that's the case, but we can verify, yeah.
Okay. No, I think, I think those were the, were the main ones, but base density, maximum density, and then that R, R one piece. If I may, because it's related, um, is on page uh, one hundred and fourteen? I have no idea what the section is, but it's, it's eighteen A five. I was just interested in that statement there. So, "Single family dwellings do not count as units for the purpose of this section." It's, I'm trying to roll that back into the table around lot, lot density. So, whi- which is why I said it's related. So when, when we're saying there's the two, two dwelling units per lot, does that not include a single family unit bas- based on that statement there? That, oh, it was just confusing to me is why, why we weren't counting single family dwellings as units.
I, I think I might.
Commissioner Olson, go ahead.
Sorry, I, I think I might be able to answer that one. I, I believe it's just because once you put two single family units on a lot, we would stop calling them single family, not necessarily because they're, uh, any difference. You would, I, I, you might not call it a duplex, but, you know, maybe it's a townhouse, maybe it's technically a cottage, even if they're larger units. That's kind of my interpretation, is it's all just kind of technical at that point. It's not necessarily, uh, different in terms of outcomes. It's just, oh, well, it's not technically single family anymore, because you've got two units on one lot, which seems a little odd. That being said, I think that's just because single family has to meet the base density requirements in units per acre. So that would be under R six versus, so you couldn't build two single family homes on one lot that are going to be, uh, on a fifty-four hundred square foot lot, for instance, because that would not meet the base requirements of R six. You, you'd need a, a larger lot to build two single family houses, is my understanding of it. But you could build two, uh, you could build a cottage housing unit, two cottage housing units or something along those lines if you wanted, which does seem a little why, which is kind of the question I had with that other segment on DAUs is why are we making this kind of, what feels to me, this arbitrary distinction? On the other hand, I think the intent there is to try and prevent really large, single family homes smashed together on a lot where they aren't subdivided and they aren't separated. The concern I have is, will we see that? But with townhouses, like we've seen in some areas, so, yeah.
Um, Chair, if we can, I mean, I, I, I hate to guess on interpretation and what it means. So it's written for a specific reason. So if you would allow staff to take a look at this section and not guess about what it means, and we can come back and verify why that language is in there and the intent and how it relates to the calculation of the number of units and density. Because I think that's where, where we are, and I'd, I'd never like to guess. Because I think that's where, where we are, and I'd, I'd never like to guess.
Yes, that sounds great, thank you so much. Commissioner Messias, did you have a comment? No, you pass, okay. And, oh, Vice Chair Thompson, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So. My, I have a lot of concerns about the ADU language. And I, as the rest of you, at least, at least some of you are a little concerned, confused about the, uh, actual language in the, uh, proposed, uh, code. But I, I guess I'd like to go back to, it's, it's better looking at the report from. Kimley Horn and, um, wandering through some of the. Some of the, uh. Well, I don't know, the, the, um, ideas there that we're supposed to be following. And. And the first one, and you sort of touched on it already, but the comments have been along those lines. If the unit. The ADU is built and can be, be considered a separate housing unit all in of itself. Built to code, the whole full mill deal. And then we were thinking that, that, could that be sold separately? And if it could, then. I, I have concerns that. It shouldn't, maybe an ADU is not the right term for that. And we need to find a new term. Because I think different conditions apply to that, as we were discussing at the beginning of the meeting. And then there's, uh, some of the, uh, old language, which is going away. About living, you know, family living in there and everything, which is, that can go away, that's fine. But to me, the issue is if that can be subdivided or sold separately, and it's going to be counted as such in our analysis of, uh, the use of, of, uh, numbers of, of units that we have available, then, um, w- we need to go about. This whole ADU code differently than what we have now. And one of the, uh, topics includes. Uh, you know, waves building fees for ADUs. Well, if it's going to be able to be sold separately, why are we, uh, waiving building permit fees? I mean, if they're gonna make some money out of this, well, um, that's, it's a good deal for somebody. And then I believe that there is still the language in here somewhere that, um, they don't have to. Be, uh, compliant with environmental, uh, rules. With regard to, uh. Trees, uh, impervious surface, all of that kind of stuff. So I, I, I need a little more clarification, and I am not comfortable at all giving a homeowner the right to build a separate living unit, which is able to be sold under middle housing. And increases their lot value, but they have, they had no requirements at all to comply with our permitting and other building processes. So that's my concern, and, and I'm, I leave it. I can, um. Leave it to, I'm, I'm sure Todd and Deb have some ideas about my comments, and maybe some of the rest of you do too.
I think, Debbie, would you like to say something?
Well, first of all, I, 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 there are, I'm trying to see if I can summarize what the concerns are, first of all. Which I think were concerned about having a, an ADU, which would, I guess, would have to be a detached ADU that can be sold separately, and concerned that if that's the case, uh, why are we waiving fees? And why are they not required to comply with permitting and other processes? So.
That's right, you got it.
Great, um, so I think what I'd like to do is kind of fact check that, and because I don't. My gut is telling me that you can't just build something willy nilly and not comply with the regulations. But let me double check that in case there are any exceptions from certain codes for ADUs. So let me double check the facts on that. In terms of, uh, code compliance and when and why fees are waived. And then in terms of, uh, being able to sell lots separately, does it then go from being an AD, detached ADU to being something else? So there's, there's a number of things in there, so let me check the facts and figure out what the facts are, and then how they are reflected in the code.
Thank, thank you for doing that for us. Commissioner Vanderlin, then Commissioner Dorian.
Yes, we actually had this conversation at our last meeting, and we had directed or asked consultants to come back with some of them. I think, way, at least I'll just speak for myself, the way I talked about it the last meeting was that it appeared that the definition of a PDU has really changed when you bring in missing middle. Also conflicts with the traditional definition of what an accessory unit is. I think that when you get into a setting where we have right now, where ADUs are becoming a major development issue, opportunity. And you have separately, uh, you have separate units on separate lots that are being financed separately, be titled separately. How is that an ADU? What is it ancillary to? What's the difference between a detached ADU under those circumstances? Oh, which leads to all the other questions about, well, if that's true, then why would it be exempt from anything else? I think we're at a handicap here, because I think there has been a definition or an evolution of, of these housing types over time, particularly as we get into missing. Until we, we sort that out, we're gonna be struggling with this question. It's a code question, because I think it gets to definitions and code.
Commissioner Dorian, and then Commissioner Ol- Olson.
Yeah, I, I guess my question is to, kind of to staff, making, making a note as well. I, I just scanned through the code that was in front of us tonight, and I, I don't think it includes the ADU code, which is possibly because there were no changes to it, is, is, is that right? I, I was looking for KMC eighteen seventy-three one hundred, and I, I didn't see it in, in the packet.
Can you say the number again, Commissioner Dorian?
Uh, so, I, I think the ADU code is in KMC eighteen dot seventy-three dot one hundred.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's, there's some, uh, red lines in, in that section, albeit there's not, not a whole lot.
Um, and I guess the, the only reason I bring that up is in, in reference to public comment. Obviously, we've had comment about ADUs and wanting to facilitate ADUs. Now we're having slightly different comment from commission. But I, I, I think what we want to do is, we, we want to facilitate them, but not have it be facilitated in, in such a way as it's just carte blanche for developers to actually build middle housing when really we want, we want to enable ADUs. But to the, to the point of public comment, I, I do think I would be interested in still digging into the ADU code a bit more to see what, what there is in sense ADUs and where there are potential, um, to extend that further. So that, that's the only reason I bring it up.
Commissioner Olson.
Yeah, I, I, first off, I would appreciate staff reviewing what requirements there are for ADUs. But I can think of a couple off the top of my head. One is the size of them, the maximum size is typically, I believe it's a thousand square feet. In our code, we would need to review that. I'll defer to staff on that, but that seems like a pretty big difference to me in what's allowable. Another big difference is it's built in relation to a single family house, which is you can have two ADUs detached or access, or attached, uh, per single family house. And so this does not overlap with missing middle housing, and I, I think we should completely separate the two as a result of that. The intent is for people who have a single family house to be able to build an additional unit that would be akin to a cottage style unit, but they don't have to subdivide their lot. Which is the reason why I brought up the question I had earlier of, if you have a larger lot with multiple houses on it, and you want to build multiple DADUs, as far as I can tell, what we have is not compliant with what I understand state law to be, because we're providing a permit, that being said, I would defer to staff and let them confirm that.
So, so noted.
I think what I'm hearing is that definitions get fuzzy. Um, which I, I definitely feel that. And I'm also hearing that we have some concern around intent. And I, I hear that too, so I think we kind of have to walk a line. Between, I don't think that in our code, we can necessarily police for all, um, intent. And I do think if we try to do that, we could create burdensome restrictions for people. Homeowners who want to change how they're using their property as their kind of life circumstances change. I'm thinking about myself, like I. If I had to meet, if, if I had to, if it becomes too financially burdensome for me to add an ADU so that my son can live in the backyard, I wouldn't do it. So if we're making it so burdensome so that developers don't take advantage of our code, we could be creating situations where families can't use their properties to take care of their families. So I, I just, I want to make that, um, explicit. I think it came up in a, a public comment earlier as well, but I just kind of want to elevate that point so that as we're talking about that, we're keeping both things in mind. And then. I don't know if we're going to be able to solve the definitional problem exactly. I think we might need to do as best we can and live with some fuzziness around the edges. So those are just my thoughts on it, Commissioner Dorian.
Sorry, I should put my thing on, my apologies, it is in the packet, I skipped over it, it is on page one hundred and fifty-seven. And there are some interesting definitions in here that might help us, I, I think. I don't necessarily need to read them all now, but there, there are definitions about maximum floor area. There's also a definition in here, which is interesting, that the number of total oc- the total number of occupants in the principal dwelling and an accessory dwelling unit combined shall not exceed the maximum number established for a single family dwelling. So that there is something that limits it still to the, to the single family. I mean, there's, there's maybe more we want to look at, given what commissioners are sharing. But there are some things in here that now that I see the section, my bad, um, are, are useful.
One, one thing that's in, I was rereading the section to in letter L, and I was referring back to the Commerce guidance about this on the condominiumizing. That's an official term, by the way. That, that, you know, there, there's the state law that prohibits, you know. Um, us from restricting that, so if somebody has those units, somebody can con- condoize those, create them into condos. So that just has to be reiterated here in our code. So I understand the concerns that you're bringing up, Commissioner Vanderlin. However, there's clear language in state law that, you know, we need to clarify that in our code, at least that part of it, anyway.
Commissioner Vanderlin?
Yes, agreed, and we, again, we did have some of this conversation earlier. What I was trying to get at, or suggesting we need to take a look at, is when we have a situation where you do create a condoized, uh, whether it's attached or detached, or it's on a separate unit. And at that point, I think you're moving away from the traditional ADU definition. This isn't a backyard, uh, granny flat, it isn't a place for, uh, to put a child or for a, uh, to be able to provide care to, to elderly. This, this is something entirely different. The intention here is profit. And you don't need to condoize, you don't need to have separate utilities, you don't need to finance something like that, do you think so? To me, those are the chara- key characteristics that differentiate from those. So if we have a development request that includes a conduization or includes building a separate unit on a separate lot with these other indicators, that's telling me that we're doing something entirely different. And those should not be, Vice Chair Dwight's example, those should not be exempt from, uh, providing the same support that any other similar dwelling would have, uh, tax purposes in the city. They should have the same responsibilities.
Yeah, I think that's, again, something that Debbie said that she would check on, so that we can, we can come back to that. Commissioner Olson.
Yeah, I, I just want to push back on that a bit, because I, I don't think that's the case. When you conduitize this type of unit, you're changing the assessed value of the original property. You're separating something that was originally part of that whole unit and now making it its own piece. But that doesn't necessarily separate the property, right? It'd be more along the lines of an HOA potentially. And at that point in time, I don't see why we're going to try to be overly restrictive on something that's only going to apply to single family housing, generally going to be done as infill, and it's frankly fairly difficult for a developer to go in and make money off of. The bulk of it is for people who live in their houses and needed an accessory dwelling in it. Yes, it is possible to make money off of it, but the developer's gonna have to go to a lot of different houses and. Make these DADUs. And so I'm very, very concerned that we are going to end up in the name of trying to prevent a developer from making a bunch of monies off of DADUs, making it effectively infeasible for someone to take their property and add a DADU. And everyone that I know, I know people that live in conduitized DADUs and ADUs, and every single one of them, it is a family friend that ended up wanting to get some ownership stake, and so they ended up conduitizing as a result, but they don't necessarily own the land separately or distinctly. So I just, I just wanted to voice that.
Yes, thank you for sharing that, and I think Debbie, again, will do some fact checking for us, and we can talk about it again. Are there any other unrelated to this issue topics that commissioners would like to surface before we move on? Okay, um, there were, I think. There's one thing, I think there were two things, but one thing that I can remember. Right now, and we did talk about it earlier, about the, the parking as, looking at that as an incentive, reducing parking requirements to, um. Reduce impervious surfaces, and there, there was a whole section of this code, it was in red, not highlighted, so we didn't touch on it. But that, is, there's a table where there are parking requirements associated with different kinds of developments. So I'm hopeful that in that table, we can see some changes. Potential changes for us to consider, that's one thing. And I can't remember what the other thing was, so it's either not important, or it will come back to me, and we can discuss it later. So, um. Debbie and Todd, would you like to talk about our next steps?
Well, the next steps is, well, you know, we have some discussions with the consultant over the next week to, you know, do some consideration and review of some of these codes and issues that you brought up tonight. Our intent is to have another. Our intent is to have another discussion meeting at the next Planning Commission meeting. And at that point, we'll take, you know, a pulse of the commission, whether or not it's appropriate to move forward with a public hearing on April 1st. But again, I don't, you know, we don't want to rush this, but that was our initial intent, was to kind of move this forward. So, we'll do our work with Nick and Clay at Kimley Horn and do some fact-checking and whatnot, and then bring back some of these answers to your questions, and probably lay out something similar in a memo that kind of explains these, and, you know, go from there. And that's kind of what our thoughts are.
I found their memo incredibly helpful. So, you can pass that along to them, and if they feel so called, if they do it again, I'm sure I would find it helpful again. I'm seeing some nods too. All right, unless there is anything for the good of the order, I will call this meeting of the Kenmore Planning Commission adjourned at nine eleven. Thank you, everyone.